Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Comnet?
Here.
Councilmember Culver?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody in attendance to please stand for quick leeways, all by moon and silence in honor of our troops. Public leeways is provided by the United States of America and to your body for which it stands, my nation under God, universal for diversity and justice. Thank you. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda considering its routine nature when passed at the hold of one board of the council. If any member of the council or the audience wished to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration, but as I said, now unable to remove, we consider following approval of remaining consent items. Consent items include minutes from a council meeting on April 22nd, payroll for the pay period ending April 20th in the amount of $213,838.46, and for the pay period ending May 4th in the amount of $213,847.96, staff reports, and box report. Do I motion to approve consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second. Port please call roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet?
Aye.
Councilmember Culver?
Aye.
Councilmember Faber?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next for approval for the bills for May 13th in the amount of $200,967.20, do we have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call roll.
Councilmember Comnet?
Aye.
Councilmember Culver?
Aye.
Councilmember Faber?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye. We will be moving on to public comments, but before we do that, I just want to remind anybody, if you wish to address the council, I ask that you step up to the microphone, state your name and your business, and speak clearly and loudly so that residents that are watching from home are able to hear what you have to say. But if there's anybody that wishes to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda, please step up with the microphone now. And we will move right along to agenda items. Before we start with agenda items, I just have one quick announcement. I'm going to do things just a little bit differently. I've had several people reach out to me stating they're not always sure what we were voting on as a council. Some people, they simply did not know how to access the package to read the details of what we're discussing, and some people, you know, said they just don't have the time to read the packet. So as each item is brought up, I will give a very brief synopsis on what the agenda item entails prior to any discussion. With that being said, we will move on to the new business. We'll open with a public hearing on the price application. Public hearing is an opportunity for the city to continue with the cleanup work in the trailer parks and for most of the comments that I am aware of, people want to see our trailer parks re-legalized and brought back to the conditioner end 15 to 20 years ago. This is an opportunity that will give us, that will be available to us. We have a 15-day window in which we can receive public comments and suggestions. So please send us your ideas and thoughts, and please keep your correspondence appropriate and positive, and we cannot and will not submit your suggestions if they are inappropriate. So if anybody would like to offer a suggestion for, in reference to this public hearing, you can do so now, or you can send something to the city.
Yeah, they can email those to the city. My email address is on the website. You can send them to any elected official as well, if they'd rather do that. The application is available at the front counter if anybody wants to take a look at it so that they're informed on it. It essentially provides special funding through housing and urban development that would provide new water, sewer, and streets in the mobile home parks because the grant is specifically for mobile home parks, manufactured housing, and it would also provide funding for purchase of new mobile homes that could then be sold to homeowners here in the community and buy some mobile homes, sell them to homeowners, reinvest that money in time where you can turn over the housing stuff there. People would be more inclined to go there if there was new water, new sewer, new streets, and everything was nice.
And new water was compared to?
Yes.
What's their number?
So the group that came, the mobile home vets?
They opted not to do it.
Came in, wow. They realized it was a bigger task than they thought it was.
Right.
You can't turn those parks around from the state they're in to where they need to be without some sort of funding now because it's been so long.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, questions, anything from our audience, any questions, suggestions? And like I said, once again, just because you don't have a question now doesn't mean that you cannot email one of us up here with a suggestion or comment within that 15-day period so that we can put the application together to receive funds to take care of the trailer parks. So at this time, we will close the public hearings since nobody is...
We're going to leave the public hearing more kind of open because if people want to...
For the purposes of this meeting, we're going to end that. And we will move on to have a consideration of bill number 24-37 ordinance to establish section 3.18, citizen participation of the Kewonee City co-ordinances concerning procedures for public comments at public meetings. And we've always had an unwritten rule that limited the length of time residents were allowed to address the council ordinarily. We've always kind of limited it to three minutes. The ordinance will put in writing the general rule that we have followed for basically my entire tenure and at least some, if not all, previous mayors. This ordinance is being presented in the interest of meetings and prevent personal verbal attacks on council members and other city officials, as well as abolish foul and abusive language. So what about a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
The only thing I have a question on is that part D, the group of three or more individuals speaking on the same topic. I don't want to limit somebody from being able to express themselves. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. When I read that, it just seemed like it would be very easy to get one spokesperson for that group and take over that group, and maybe somebody else's opinion or thought gets shuffled onto that.
So with all of it, you still have the ability to allow people to talk longer or, you know, if it is the, they all have the same opinion, have more people come up and talk? Does this limit it? You know, if you're hearing the exact same three minutes from 10 people, you can say...
Okay, if you have a different...
Well, it's kind of like when we were discussing the privatization of sanitation, and they basically elected their union representative to speak on their behalf, so we allotted him a little extra time since he was, you know, voicing the opinion of the entire local. Now, that's kind of what that is too. I think they just want to limit people's ideas. And if they have something different to add, they are more likely to...
Well, let me rephrase it, maybe. I want to make sure that I don't want anybody to feel like they can't speak. I guess that's my... What this is saying is that if I come up there and say, "I don't want chickens," and I speak for three minutes on, "I don't want chickens," and Steve does the same thing, he does the same thing, same topic, that's the three.
You've used it a couple times.
Yeah, they kind of reiterate the same thing, but if you had something else to bring, then you have your, it's, we will allow it, but we don't want to hear 100 people say the same thing.
Or if you give redundancy, rather than two hundred, you know, people's viewpoints.
And again, you always have the option to allow people.
As long as we have that option.
Yes, this just gives you, should we want to...
The option to, okay, unless you have something different to say, then come up here.
Yes.
Yeah, because in reading that first, it just, and maybe it's the wording or just maybe the way that I took it. It just came off a little abrasive.
And to be clear, this is a new ordinance that is being presented tonight and doesn't affect this exact council meeting. Although I will ask. Any other discussions, questions, concerns? Please call roll.
Councilmember Culver?
Aye.
Councilmember Faber?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye. And item C, consideration of bill number 24-38 ordinance granting a special use permit to HVN Capital LLC for the property located at 618 Tenny Street. This is a request from HVN Capital to open a cannabis dispensary at 618 Tenny Street, commonly known as the Broken Chimney property. By ordinance, the approval of any such business requires the issue of a special use permit, and the business cannot operate without meeting the requirements that may be placed upon it under the process. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I'll speak up first. I was already told against coming to town, as I know, that's here and here and there, but a lot of comments are received from the citizens of the city. I quite agree with them. I don't like the location of it. I don't like the idea that it's very close to our school. I don't think I was here when voted for the monafi. That was close to school, and I think, I believe it was the superintendent of the school said that we're the only one, basically in Illinois, that if we grant this, we'll be the closest to the school. Everyone else is not further. So I do, I do think that it's, we should take this into consideration with children. Even we have, even the place, can't think of a place next to...
Foley Plus?
Yeah, that was the other one.
Oh, Brideway.
Brideway, Brideway's there. So I just think it's a bad location altogether, and I just feel that they shouldn't do it.
I had an awful lot of people text and call and stop me and talk to me, and nobody said that, they didn't care if it came to town or not. That wasn't, they just didn't want it or it's bad because of Brideway and the schools. And I think I could have picked a better spot, but, you know.
I had quite a few people contact me in support of it being at that location due to the fact that that building has set their empty and has had a revolving door of businesses through. Just a... I mean, I've got the same. I've had both sides of it, and I look at this from a standpoint of a lot of areas outside of just personal preference and things, and I look at what would it do to the city, both positive and negative. I've looked at other cities. I work literally in Normal right around the corner from a cannabis dispensary, and every morning I go to work on my breaks and everything, I see what goes on there, what doesn't go on there, and you couldn't tell that it's a regular business from anything else. So I've had both people say, you know, they're for it, and I've had people say they're against it, but like Mike said, that building has been a revolving door of businesses, and there's nothing in there today, so I don't know.
I actually called some parents that I know that have children in other communities that have dispensaries and asked them if they noticed any, anything positive or negative towards their school district or anything that concerned them that has been going on since the dispensary has been open, that would concern them for their children's safety or well-being. And overwhelmingly, the people that I talked to, they said that, unless they, you know, if they didn't know that it was a dispensary already there, they would have no clue that it was there, and it had no negative impact on their school districts whatsoever. I talked to four different families that had kids in school districts that, that had dispensaries already.
I literally worked in Normal for six months before I knew beyond hello was a dispensary in the formula. I turned every day on Eagle Road. I had no idea what beyond hello was.
I actually have been to a dispensary, the one in Gelsbury, and it would be virtually impossible for somebody to get inside the building that was not legally allowed to be there. I think I had to show my identification, I think it was at least three times that I know of, that I had to show my identification just to get into the door to talk to, to somebody, and I went in there and made a purchase, you know, for somebody with cancer, so, you know, that was, they didn't want to sell, so I went in for them. I'd say it was...
It's a lot different than what you would expect, not only...
It was very, very tight. As I say, I had to show my ID to two different officers, and I had to show my ID again when I got actually into the dispensary.
You had to wait in the first.
So, you know, safety would be the least of my concerns as far as the dispensary itself.
I like to put the community, some people...
Hi, Nicholas Wogan, retired chief of police here. I just want to talk about it. I'm fully in support of it and the location. Most of you know I was diagnosed with cancer, and it has helped me tremendously sleeping and with pain before they had me on morphine. Prescription drugs are much worse than anything that's at a dispensary. As for the security, everyone that I've been to in multiple towns, you walk in, you have to show an ID. If someone is with you, they have to show an ID, even if they're not buying. Then you get let in through locked doors, and then you come in, there are no products out there. There's no, there's no cannabis or vapes or anything that are out. You walk up to a register, there's someone there, and once you wait that turn, and you have to show your ID again before you can even order. You take that, and there's a security guard that's always in there, and you can't, and there's no re-entry through the front door. You have to go out another exit out there. So security has been top-notch at every place I've visited. I'm sure it's going to be the same here. As for the location, I mean, that's a building that we've struggled to get somebody in there to have the same business for years. This has, it has the perfect spot to go over there for the company to come in and build proper security and have it secure as possible so no one can get in with the children. And another way to look at it from mine, I would have spent nine years in narcotics. I know more about narcotics in this Kewonee area in the town and dealt with it. The only one that has the same as me is the current chief of police, who worked narcotics with me for just as many years. I think the parents from Weathersfield, Dr. Brooks, I've heard him, his statement, what he put out, not once have they mentioned Bax gas station. When they talk about their open campus at lunch, they can go there. Anybody can walk in that store, all the alcohol that's in there, the cigarettes and the tobacco vapes that are in there, and I can tell you right now, there's a bigger problem, they have a bigger problem with alcohol and cigarettes than they would ever with cannabis for their students. So, but I've never heard anybody complain about that being 50 feet away from...
I think the problem that we have with Bax and being 50 feet away that is more common now is vaping with kids. It is brought to such a cool thing with the flavors and the different stuff you can get there. I think that makes up most of the schools, it means too.
Well, the vapes that are in there, a lot of them are using tobacco vapes.
Yes.
They're always going to get their hands on from some other entity or illegally to get cannabis vapes or to buy cannabis, but if these places come in and you see it, it's, like they said, like Chris was saying, you go into these places and it's a beautiful place, when you go in there, everything's nice and clean, there's nothing out, easy process, I mean, you're going to see, and there's, I know there's a big stigma about it. A lot of people think, oh, marijuana, this is terrible. It's like, I think it proven, and that's why the state has legalized it. And then there's also medical benefits for a lot of people. My 80-year-old father goes once a week to dispensaries to get items to help him sleep. I mean, you're going to see people of all ages that are in there and of all members of social classes that come in there to use the dispensary. And I think that it would be a terrible, terrible mistake to not allow them to have it in there, to, one, fulfill the building, to help out the people that want to use the dispensary, and for the tax revenue that's going to come in from it. So I, from my perspective, if I was still the chief of police, and I know I was contacted about it earlier, and I was in full support of it then as the police chief, and I'm in full support of it now.
Let me ask you, chief, with your experience doing narcotics and then also being a customer, what aspect of marijuana would you consider to be more of a risk to not just schoolchildren, but anybody? The purchases they'd be making from a dispensary or the illegal cannabis that's present on the streets?
Well, I can tell you, the number of cannabis dealers has not diminished. It's only helped them because the cost of it is so much more. So, you know, people don't want to, if you have to pay $140 for a bag of cannabis at the dispensary, that's going to be a lot more than your local dealer that can sell it for $60. And so it's, and for people that don't want to go to the dispensary or want to obtain it illegally, that's going to be their avenue. So those guys are still going to be around, which I know the police are working on to maintain that, but I wouldn't, I'm more worried about the kids getting it illegally from other dealers, not from the dispensary.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Justin Recker. I wanted to say two things. One, I'm back up, Nick, there's one element of this, and that's Bax selling alcohol right across the street. You could throw a football and hit it. And I don't know, I'm not going to go into details, but my family was destroyed by alcohol. I am also a veteran of the United States Navy with a service connected disability for PTSD. And I've been on five different mental health medicines to try to combat that. And the only thing that has worked is when Illinois legalized cannabis. Before that, and now, I'm free of the drugs. I don't need it, and it's only because of the presence of, and the availability of this product. Now, the location, I'm not going to duplicate this, is what Nick said. It's a building that needs to create tax revenue. It's a building that needs to have employees, but don't, don't vote this down because of the product, because the product helps people.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Hello, I'm Jim Ensley. I have no issue whatsoever as far as bringing it in town. The people that it has helped, you know, thank God for that. My only issue is the location. As a couple of them have brought up. I've heard a lot of talk about, you know, the security of people getting in. Okay, the building is as secure as Fort Knox. I did that. But the location, it shares a parking lot with a drug rehab place. It's 250 feet away from school property, like you had brought up earlier. You've talked to other parents in different communities. What communities? How far is dispensary away from the, you know, the schools and the daycares? Now, you're from here to the city street out there away from the school. Those are 1,000, 2,000 feet away. We're talking within spitting distance, figuratively speaking, of children, six, seven, eight, 10-year-old children that you want to put up at the drug place. I have no problem with bringing it in town, not one bit, because it does help a lot of people, as most, every one of you gentlemen and ladies know that helps, and I'm awful for that. But there is other places in this city, in this community, that that place can go. And I, there's one right up, you know, the old family video, just for an example.
Right across the street from a daycare center?
I'm just saying, there's other places around. I'm not using that one as an example, but there's other places in the city of Kewonee that it could go to.
Jim, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
We were talking about safety of children, and we're talking about the security, and my question is, the safety of children, what are you worried about? See, I hear this stigma, we're worried about the safety of children. Are we worried about them getting in and getting cannabis? Because we're already proving that it's secure, so what, what safety of children are we worried about? That's what I want to know, because I hear everybody saying the safety of the children, but what safety are we worried about? Are we worried about traffic in there? Are we worried about their getting access to the drugs? What are we worried about safety of children? Because I want to know what safety aspect of this is going to impact the children.
Okay, part of it is the people that it will bring in, because I have seen it. I've been to other communities, as Mayor Moore has been. I've talked to other people, and I hate to say it, but you can go back to what it was years ago, that somebody would go in and you had brought up the alcohol there. Go in, get alcohol, bring it out, give to someone. It happened, unfortunately, all the time. This is another possibility. I'm not saying it will, I'm not saying it won't, but it's not the idea, as I bring up again, it's not the idea of bringing a dispensary in Kewonee. I have no problem with that.
If a dispensary was somewhere further, you don't think that kids are still going to find a way to get there and get access to it and get the marijuana from somebody?
You have to look at every, all, every aspect there is.
I am, and you don't think...
I'm not arguing that point.
No, but what I'm arguing is that this is on Main Street where there's a lot of exposures of someone going in and buying, and then walking out, hey Steve, I got this for you. Do you think that's going to happen there or somewhere in a back alley deal somewhere?
I can't speculate, and I won't speculate.
Well, we're speculating that they're going to go in there, buy marijuana, and walk out and hand it to these kids that are right there. That's what we're speculating.
My issue right up, right up now is the location.
I get that, and for safety of the kids. I just want to know what's safety.
Other issues, you know, different people have other issues, but mine is just the location.
Fair enough.
There is other places in Kewonee that they could bring it up to, but I just, in my opinion, is not a good spot for that.
Can I speak to Jim, concern?
Yeah, come up to the microphone and state your name.
Absolutely.
My name is Nancy Sutton, and the thing the kids will be, will be top of mind, they'll be walking past, going to lunch, and it's just like that Robinson sign. Everybody's looking at the Robinson sign. Well, then we'll have the cannabis dispensary so close to school, and the kids walking past, it's going to be top of mind conversations and be like advertising, going, I never tried marijuana, but you know there's a dispensary there, maybe I can find it on the street.
Nancy, when was the last time you were in school? Do you have school age kids? Do you don't think they talk about it?
I have...
Do you think they talk about it today in school? Let's not be naive. They talk about it.
Yes, they do.
We don't have a dispensary in town. You don't think they talk about it today in school?
I'm sure they do, but it's going to be top of mind.
You don't think it's top of mind today?
No, I do not, not like a little...
I think you're, I think you're...
With that walking past.
I think you're a little lost from morality there because it is top of mind. And I think we're more worried about that, but what really I'm worried about is my kids vaping.
When we do marketing, they want all the things together. So if I sell to a restaurant, they want to be lined up with the other restaurants so when people walk by, they'll look and say, oh, I can do McDonald's, I can do Burger King, those kinds of things. And so the more times they go past, the more it's going to be part of the conversation. So if it was in another location, it just wouldn't be a part of the conversation so much. But one of the things I wanted to point out is I do not think it is 250 feet from the school. Doug Webber and I got aerial maps, and it looks to me like it's more like 240 feet. So I will show you this, but the school owns this alley down to College Street, and then the property that's going to be the cannabis dispensary is right here, and it's like 240 feet, not 250.
And you were talking about when kids go for lunch, right?
Or just after, after football games.
After football games, but kids go to lunch. Where do they go to lunch? Pizza Hut, Lagontola?
Subway.
Subway.
Subway, yeah.
Do they pass by that, going to Subway? Do they pass by that, going to Subway? Do they pass by going to Pizza Hut, Lagandola? No. Thank you.
Yeah, there you go.
It's next door, they're not passing by it though. It's, it's, they're not passing by it though.
Personally, I don't care if it comes to town or not. My name is Douglas Swimmer. I don't care if it comes to town or not. As Mr. Recker is, I'm also retired Air Force on disability. Keith got disability through PTSD. I have PTSD plus several other incidences. I do not take marijuana, even though I have been offered it several times by different doctors. That is my choice. And I try to struggle through with all of my problems the way I do. Now, please be mindful at how you attack people that come up here, because I've heard council members make gaffes over some stupid things and I can bring those back up for you. Now that being said, it is within two hundred and forty feet. Therefore, at least that's what I, my opinion is, that they need to have a survey done to prove that it is not within the safe zone. And whose ide, right idea was it to make it only two hundred and fifty feet when the state, I believe it's a thousand? Or at least it was a thousand? What brain genius did that? And you people are smarter than that. Yes, you were the one who passed that?
Yep, we did.
Okay, so there you go, that, that says a lot. You guys work on the lowest level of government, which is the hardest to do, and I admit that. But you gotta look out for the best interest of the city of Kewanee. Like I said, there are better places to put that. You've got a place down here that was the old Pizza Hut down here on Main Street. You have Franklin School, it's out here by Baker Park, oh my God, then it's by the dollars. Okay, so what do you want? That place down here, you could also put it in the medical arts facility, which is next to, which was part of the hospital across the street, which was right by Mayor Moore's house. That'd actually be a much better place as far as I'm concerned. Because that's not too far from where I live either. So use some brains, especially when you're talking about children, you get kinda sending towards people when they want to come up here to talk about children. Children, Mayor Moore made a gaffe when he said he called parents. You don't talk to the parents. Mr. Koner here was correct. Do you don't think that's not on kids' minds? If you wanna know where the dispensary is down in Hillsborough, I can guarantee you almost every kid down there probably knows. The parents probably don't know, but the kids do. Again, that goes back to what Nancy said, top of mind. That is what you have to come through. Now, if you do pass this right here tonight, I want confirmation that it's not within, what the city says is two hundred and fifty feet. Like I said, my only card of criticism to you is, that I'm gonna call it the brain trust that passed it originally, I disagree with. You're gonna have to prove to me with a survey, not by your opinion, because if that's the case, then how about if the school goes ahead and buys those two lots, those two houses there, which I like to see them do, tear them down, put a parking lot there for the people to come to the football games. That means even if they get it passed, you get it passed and the school does that, their effects, they're out of business right then and there. Now that being said, I wanna see the survey showing that it is not within two hundred and fifty feet of school property. That is the whole thing. Prove it. Thank you.
My name's Jack Hager. I'm the retired Illinois State Police Officer that spoke at the planning commission um on this particular matter. And I, I believe I'm the Lone Ranger. I have no problem with the location, other than it's in my community. I spent eleven years of my career in the Division of Criminal Investigations. Ten years of that was as a supervisor of the Central Illinois Narcotics Task Force. I supervised undercover agents doing narcotics work. One step when we arrest bad guys, we debrief them, we ask their entire history of drug use and sales. Not one of the defendants I've ever interviewed or read their interview did they say, I started out smoking crack. I started out cooking dope. I started out shooting heroin. Every one of them started out smoking weed. There was a time in my career that went up. Dope dealer came to town. Within weeks, a chief or sheriff called me up and said, Jack, we've gotta do something about this dope house. And now, we're debating whether we own a dope house in our community legally speaking. I know the legislators decided it was smart to do that. And just for the record, I'm talking about recreational drug use. I'm not talking about medical marijuana. I'm talking about recreational drug, drug abuse. And we've heard the, the innuendos tonight. It's only weed. It's not as harmful as alcohol, tobacco, vaping. That's the wrong question. The question we should ask is, what virtue does it bring to this community? What benefit does this bring to this community? The answer is dollars and cents. Dope dealing has been successful because it makes money. Especially cannabis. It has been the number one cash crop in this country for decades. Forty years. It outproduces corn, soybeans, everything we grow agriculturally. Do you know what a license in the state of Illinois costs for a dispensary? Sixty thousand dollars. There's money in dope dealing. Here's a question I think I, I'd like to know the answers to. Would you encourage your loved ones to become customers of the cannabis dispensary? If not, why not? It is a gateway drug. What's the harm to children? They start there and some of them continue on in their adventures in recreational drug use. It's a dangerous beginning, absolutely devastating. I've seen the devastation. I'm sorry?
Are you working to an end here? We're past three minutes.
I, I didn't know anybody was being timed, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't know I had three minutes.
Yeah, that's fine, just, I'm-
Okay, I, I can try to wind it up here.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Today, if this special use permit is granted, we will have a legal dope dealing place in the city of Kewanee. And never forget, at this point in time, cannabis distribution is still a federal crime. Taking money from an illegal activity and washing it through the normal cycle is money laundering. It is also a federal crime. Those buildings are subject to forfeiture under federal law and the only thing that stops that is the political win today. I just encourage you, please, what's in the best interest of the future of Kewanee? Some things are worth more than dollars and cents. I want to encourage my fellow citizens to be respectful when they're at this microphone. These folks serve in a difficult job and please be polite to them. Thank you.
I, I don't wanna be argumentative, but I too have served in law enforcement and continue to serve in law enforcement and have been so for uh thirty-seven years now. I, I don't have the experience you have in narcotics, but I can point out a lot of, lot more situations where people that I know personally that have smoked marijuana that never went beyond that. And yes, I do know some people that started with marijuana and went to the hardest stuff, but it is
That was the-
a lot rarer case than the people that smoked and just stayed with, with marijuana.
Gary, I was gonna ask the same question. We've got stats on your time in your narcotics division of how many have gone from marijuana to this? But do you know how many people in this community that have tried it in high school, outside of high school, college, and have not gone further than that? And I'm willing to bet, because I'm one of them, I've, I've smoked recreational marijuana when I was in college. Never did anything beyond it. I know people in this crowd that, that are my age that have done the same thing, have not gone beyond it and have not turned into a drug dealer, dope dealer, a crack addict, a thing like that, so. I wonder how many of those were the skill tip, right? In the, in the aspect of actually going on and doing further, it is a, it, it is known to be a gateway drug and everybody says that, but how many stopped there? And I'm willing to bet more people stop at marijuana than going the other way.
Now, I have no idea for the statistics of those who
And I wish there was stats.
who only smoke marijuana and that's as far as it goes.
Right.
Quite frankly, um that was, I, I'm trying to word it appropriately.
Yeah.
The Central Illinois Enforcement Group did not do street level drug.
Right.
Um we did mid-level and, and above. But yes, I personally know people who smoked cannabis and never gone any further, and I'm not contending that that does not happen. What I'm contending is, absolutely without exception, in my life's experience, and you gotta understand, I, I supervised
For sure.
five to seven, eight narcotics agents running thirty active cases each for ten years. That's a lot of dope cases.
So a ton of dope cases.
Uh and, and without exception, I've never encountered any of them that moved beyond cannabis, that did not start with cannabis.
Absolutely.
And that-
And I, I don't doubt that, and I'm, I'm sure you're right, because I have some similar experiences, but I have far more people that didn't continue than ever did, that I know personally.
Yes, and still recreational drug use, there again, we all have our personal biases and of course my work in narcotics
Absolutely.
is going to slant me that direction.
Correct, you've seen the worst.
But, but quite frankly, well, I've locked the door on a meth lab and took my niece out of it. Yeah, I've seen the devastation up close and personal. I can tell you story after story.
For sure.
If I had my choice, it never would've been legalized in Illinois, but the state didn't give me that choice.
But they do give you the choice to say, not in my community, and that's all I'm asking you to seriously consider. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you.
But that's fine, yeah, they, they did give us that choice and that was not my choice alone. That was the choice of the council and, and we chose to go in the other direction. But I'd also like to uh say to those that are against marijuana and the fact that it is still against federal law, that is soon to be changing too, because they are actually uh working on uh or, or not ordinances, but uh federal laws right now that are gonna change.
Well, I, Mayor, I have to disagree with you slightly there in there. They're working on rescheduling. Now, in case you don't understand scheduling, scheduling is from one to five. One being a substance has no medicinal value and a high potential for abuse. Five, it has low potential for abuse and high med, um medicinal purposes. They're considering moving marijuana down that scale because it has had, as we've heard tonight, significant medicinal values. So it's moving down the skit.
Is there, alright, I'm gonna ask somebody else if they would like to, but I do appreciate your opinions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Does somebody else would like to comment?
Evening, Joel Hossi, living in six hundred block of Wald Street, member of the planning commission. Um I was at the meeting that sent it up to you guys. One question that I do have is something that's not really clear, especially for some upcoming stuff, is what is the distance? When they, when you guys call out distance in your ordinances, what is the distance from to, it says to property line, but where's it being taken from? I don't know if Keith can fill in on that?
What do you mean, where's it taken from? Where, where are we going?
Where are they taking the distance from? It says distance to property line or to school? Property line or property line? Okay. So with that, I did some messing around online and stuff like that, so really directly across where this, where the uh property meets College Street, it is with the easement for um College Street and then the properties behind it, over to the backside of the practice field over there is, if everything's right, is two hundred and forty-nine feet. Now, there is the e, the uh easement for the school out on College Street that's further to the east. If you go with that and based off all the GIS coordinates and everything, that is one hundred and seventy-three feet approximately from the, from property line to property line. So one thing that needs to be addressed is with this particular for the dispensary or any of the other stuff for cannabis dis, for the um possibility of a grow facility, infusion facility, all that stuff, I think you guys need to look at updating that ordinance a little bit to, so it specifically says distance from, because if you do a, another project of any sort, if you're too close to something, you gotta figure out how you're gonna get around, do stuff. If you're, if you're looking just to, to get the tax revenue out of this stuff, need to look at it really precise in the word, verbiage of everything. The other thing that I had was, one thing that didn't get brought up in the planning commission meeting was hours of operation. For the ordinances, there's, it says that there should've been stip, should be stipulations on the hours of operation and that was never brought up during the planning commission. And one thing that I did notice is that there are hours of operation and they're in the packet for that, it did have it where Sunday operation, like it was eight or nine o'clock in the morning. We don't sell alcohol in the city of Kewanee till afternoon on Sundays. I mean, there should be some sort of stipulation on hours of operation when they're open. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Joel. You can move the- You can move the mic down. There you go. There we go.
I'm Candy Corn and I wanna address two things. One is, um if we have a dispensary in town, it is very illegal cannabis. And it is graded and it's quality cannabis. And anyone in this room that doesn't think those kids can get illegal weed on the street at any time, at any given day in this town, you are sitting with blinders on. And those drugs can be laced with so much harmful residue that can do harm. Now, I also want to address that it's close to Bridgeway. Having watched two of my children go through rehab from hard drugs such as meth and coke. Yes, that dispensary's gonna be it, but I also had a daughter that was an alcoholic. She had to go to vets all the time and get gas, but that's okay. And the ones that are going to Bridgeway that have addictions, they have to be able to cope and as part of that rehab to cope with that exposure. There's a cannabis dispensary right through the backside of Bridgeway. There's a liquor store right there in that strip mall. They could just walk right there and get any liquor they want, and that's legal. So saying that it's too close to Bridgeway, I feel is a non-issue because that's part of your rehab, is to be able to be faced with either the drug of your choice, whether it was alcohol or if it's weed.
The substance.
Yes. And so that's, I, I'm in favor for it to come to town. Um I'm not gonna be one that's gonna sit in there and say, I don't want it in my neighborhood. I don't care if it's across my street from where I live. That's fine. We need it here in town, not only for revenue, but also to try to make sure that it's quality. If our kids can have their, get their hands on alcohol, you know they're gonna get their hands on the cannabis. We need it to make sure that it is- We need it to make sure that it is pure and quality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, you'll have, I'm Kimberly Hampton, and you'll have to excuse my nerves. I would talk to a room overflowing with children. But addressing a room full of adults is a little bit more nerve-wracking, so I apologize. Um, I I'm finishing up my tenth year in education and my third at Weathersfield School District. And one aspect of my job that I love and I'm passionate about is advocating for my students. If they need extra services to help them academically, if they need social services or counseling. Or if they need clean clothes that day and breakfast, I will do whatever I can to help them get those things. And um, that's what compels me to address you today. Um, I know that we've talked a lot about students passing places or going to Bex. Or we we say the word kids when referencing their access to marijuana. Um, and I don't think any of us disagree that they don't have access to those things, but I'm coming at it from an elementary teacher perspective. So I feel like my perspective is just a little bit different. So um. I believe it is our collective responsibility to protect the community's youngest. The most vulnerable and the most impressionable citizens that we have. The proximity of a dispensary so close to Weathersfield raises a few concerns. First, the location of a susp- dispensary so close to the school can inadvertently expose our students to substances. And behaviors that are not conducive to a learning environment. Not that I'm concerned elementary children will by any means go into these dispensaries, but that they will inadvertently be exposed to them. Their presence near schools can also send mixed messages to our students. Who are developing their understanding of substance abuse or substance use, I'm sorry, and their implications. Particularly, I think of October when we study red red ribbon week. And we pass out red ribbons and we talk about um abusing different substances. And how, you know, this now sends a mixed message that, well, our teachers are saying this, but there is um a dispensary so close to our school. Furthermore, the increased traffic and the potential loitering near a dispensary. I realize we're a little bit farther away than like right across the street. Um, can pose safety risks for Weathersfield students. I know Dr. Brooks, when he was here um with the Planning Commission, okay. Um, he talked about an incident where there were men in the community, one or two men, I'm not sure. Um, armed men across the street, and my classroom was on the first level, and we literally saw. A police tackle someone, you know, and so. It does make me nervous that there could be potential for those kinds of incidents. Um, obviously, I know several of you have talked about medical marijuana use. Again, I'm not referring to you being um corrupt citizens in our community. That I fear um for our children um being exposed to. The establishment of a dispensary near Weathersfield may also lead to concerns from parents and guardians potentially affecting their trust. In our ability to provide a safe and educational environment. And I have had parents and other educators share this concern. I am disappointed that I don't see more of them here to be able to share with us tonight. But we want to, um, we believe it's crucial to uphold the highest of standards. To ensure that Weathersfield remains a place where children and their parents feel confident in their children's welfare. So I urge you to just consider these points, maybe from an elementary perspective. And the broader implications for our community. Our priority should always be the health, the safety, and the education of the youngest in our community. So I respectfully request that you reconsider the location of this dispensary. And seek a site that doesn't jeopardize the integrity and. I am, and safety of our school. Um, please keep our community's students, our children, and grandchildren in mind as you regard this decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Bryant, member of the Weathersfield Board of Education, four thirty-nine Willard Street in Kewaunee. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with you guys tonight and ladies. The Weathersfield Board of Education feels it is in the best interest of its school community for the Kewaunee City Council to consider three points. When addressing the licensing of legal cannabis dispensaries in town and three proximities to, or in their proximities to any of these school facilities. First, the board urges the enforcement of federal law with regard to drug-free school zones. Requiring a buffer of one thousand feet for any cannabis cannabis dispensaries situated near our schools. Second, the board requests a commitment from the city of Kewaunee and license legal dispensaries in town to strictly enforce the law prohibiting sales minors. If there is an opportunity to learn what measures will be in place in matcha sales or potential sales of minor minors, the board welcomes that dialogue. Third, the board urges the enforcement of section four ten of the Illinois Code, which states that no cannabis business establishment. Nor any other person or entity shall place or maintain or cause to be placed or maintained an advertisement of cannabis or cannabis-infused product. In any form or through any medium within one thousand feet of the perimeter of school grounds, a playground, a recreation center, or facility, a childcare center. A public park, a public library, or game art page, which admission is not restricted to persons twenty-one years of age or older. The city should enforce federal law and require legal cannabis dispensaries to be no closer than one thousand feet to any school. While Illinois has legalized cannabis, federal law continues to identify all forms of marijuana, including medical marijuana. As a Schedule One controlled substance that has potential for abuse and diversion pursuant to the Control Substances Act. And we understand that it is in the process of maybe uh being taken down on that schedule. The Comprehensive Drug Reform Act of nineteen eighty-seven makes distributing dispensing dispensing or possessing. With intent to distribute a controlled dangerous substance or controlled substance analog while on any school properties for school purposes. That is owned by or leased to any elementary or secondary school or school board or within one thousand feet of such school property or school bus. Or while any school bus of crime of the third degree. This one thousand foot buffer is what is often referred to as the drug-free school zone, which is what we as educators in our community preach to our our children. Implications for school boards related to legalization of cannabis include the need to understand and effectively address children's emotional and behavioral health. Related to direct indirect exposure to marijuana. State Departments of Health of Health where cannabis has been legalized have launched public health campaigns. To provide resources and accurate information, educational materials about marijuana. The city of Kewaunee will need to do the same. Schools will need to partner with public health officials, youth organizations, and others to create customized resources and awareness campaigns. Adequate recourse resources should be dedicated to our public schools from the legalized cannabis tax stream to address education and awareness in this, our school community. The Weathersfield School Board respectfully requests that the thousand feet drug-free zone be maintained. And as I also, when I, my kids were growing up under my household, I had a saying, and that saying was, just because you can, doesn't mean you should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Dan, it's too many parents that don't have that attitude. I I wish more did.
Hi, I'm Amy Bryan. I teach fifth grade at Weathersfield, four thirty-nine Willard. As I look out, I have had many, many of your children and grandchildren. I've been there that long. And this is in reply to Mr. Colomer's discussion with Nancy Sutton, whose children I have had and now grandchild and grandchildren. Um, Mr. Colomer, it is true that kids talk about weird things nowadays at school. Are you currently an educator in the school system?
I am not. I have kids in school.
Okay, as a fifth grade teacher, the things that I deal with every day are mounting because of um technology.
Social media.
Okay, social media. So the, but there's also the innocent conversations. I know more about you parents than you want me to know, okay? So the parents fighting, the um grandparents who came over for dinner, the crushes that are going on in fifth grade. Those are the things. I understand that you are probably thinking in high school or junior high. They do most likely talk about alcohol. They most likely do talk about cannabis. But along with Mrs. Hampton, we are talking about our young innocent children, okay? Um, my kids in fifth grade talk about working on the farm, going fishing, sports, tumbling, baseball, doing things with their families. And the only way we talked about cannabis this year is we had a grant from Rock Island, I believe. Um, they, a gentleman came over and did a Too Good for Drugs program. And it was all about, you know, how to make good decisions. It is hard to teach children um morals and faith-based decisions. That are, it's hard to do with all the access of what's going on. So that is just what I ask you, that you guys think about the location. Because when you guys put your top deck sign out, that is in reference to a deck of cards. They're gonna Google it just like I did, and it is a reference to marijuana in the forties or the nineteen hundreds or whatever. So my point is, let's not give them more reason to talk about it.
Can I, can I, Amy, uh, I have a fifth grader at home, and I have a seventh grader at home.
Okay.
So my fifth grader.
Mm-hmm.
Is more innocent than my seventh grader.
I agree.
So when we talk about fifth graders, I agree with you a hundred percent. They're more innocent. They're talking about things that they're crushes, who they like.
I agree.
My seventh grader on Snapchat and everything else, because we have full access to his phone, text messaging, everything else, TikTok. We have an account set up that we can access TikTok, the YouTube videos, everything else. There is a difference between elementary and junior high students.
I agree.
And so I won't disagree with you that fifth graders who you teach are very innocent, junior high students are not. And we have a very strict household when it comes to technology and things. We have full access to my son's phone. And the stuff that I find on his phone from peers, from everything else, that's not coming from my household.
Right.
And to believe that my son and a family that protects him in that area still has access to some of the stuff, still knows stuff that I have no idea what these sayings, these meanings are. All all I'm saying is that we can't be thinking that just because a dispensary is gonna come in, that these kids already don't know about it, don't talk about it, don't understand it. Because it's still talked about today at that level. Maybe not a fifth grade level, because I agree with you, my fifth grader doesn't talk about it. My junior high student does.
My point is, we don't wanna make it so fifth grade is common seventh grade discussion.
I agree with that, but even taking that into account, my seventh grader knows about it, but my fifth grader's not influenced by it. Because their their mind is different when they go through puberty and they go through junior high and everything else. So while there may be a top deck thing, do you think a a fifth grader's gonna Google that, or do you think a seventh?
Let me tell you the things they Google.
Oh, absolutely, and they might, but would they understand it? Trying to explain a French kiss to my fifth grader, and he doesn't understand what that is, is different than trying to explain it to my seventh grader.
I just feel like if we're going to, also with the name, I mean, we're not, they're not supposed to advertise within so many feet as well. So I think that needs.
I'm not, I'm not arguing the name. I'm just arguing the fifth grade versus seventh grade, and that's all I'm saying. Like, I I understand my fifth grader's very innocent, my seventh grader's not. And that's all I'm arguing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paula Baker. I'm with the Board of Education at Weathersfield, and I'm not here to argue with anyone.
Yeah, no.
I do that enough at work. Um, but yes, exactly. Um, but my point is, um, I'm not for it being that close to the school. It could be two hundred and forty-nine feet, two hundred and forty feet, wherever there are other buildings in the city of Kewaunee that you could um place a dispensary. Um, because of, I know everyone is not just fifth grade, seventh grade, talking about what they're talking about, but the whole city of Kewaunee right now is talking about the dispensary.
Yes.
So everybody's talking about it on social media, at work, everywhere. So my point is, when they come to me about it and talk to me about it. Um, the questions that the people are having are, when you do have the dispensary, because everyone thinks that it's gonna pass because there's so many people that are for it. Um, what are we gonna do with the three percent? Um, what are, are we gonna use it to fix the roads? Are we gonna use it to fix the parks? Are we gonna use it to better Kewaunee? What are we doing to build in Kewaunee for our youth? Um, besides just dispensaries, slot machines, um, places to sell alcohol? We need to be able to put something more into Kewaunee that's gonna be more for our youth and to make it more presentable in Kewaunee. We have holidays, we have people who come back um every year to see people, to see what's in Kewaunee. We want them to come back to see what is better in Kewaunee, not a dispensary or another place where there's slot machines.
Or another vape shop.
Yes, vape shops. I mean, in the last um three years, what has came to Kewaunee for our youth? Nothing. Um, there should, we can figure out um the um family video, we can put something in there for the kids. I believe Cambridge has a video arcade place that they put up over there for their their youth in their town. What are we doing for our city? That's the question that I have. I I am for um having something to bring um revenue to the city, because I was going down Prospect, turning on my mom's street on Franklin. And my whole vehicle shook when it hit a pothole. And I pray that when I take my car to get the oil changed and the tires rotated, that there's no problems with it, because there's gonna be another problem. But I'm just saying, we need to be able to put things into our city that is gonna better it, you know? We have people who work at the prison, they come into Kewaunee, the roads are perfectly fine until they get here in the winter months, um, because of the snow. Um, it's not being scraped, you know, they don't wanna put the lake out too far because then it's gonna mess up the black tar that they filled the holes with. You know, we gotta do something that's gonna be better.
And and I agree.
That's why I'm here, and that's not the only reason. I'm not trying to come up here to talk about everything else.
No.
The reason why I'm up here is say, I don't want the um dispensary that close to the school. Um, I understand there is um Bex where they sell alcohol at, but that's a problem too. But why they, another problem. They can go in there and buy the marijuana, um, for a hundred and forty dollars for a bag or whatever. They're gonna take it, and then what they're gonna do is gonna take it back to wherever it is, they're gonna try to split it, add anything to it, fentanyl, which is killing people left and right at every age. Um, so we need to think of other things that we can do with with Kewaunee than a dispensary.
I wanna jump on the bandwagon of what you said, because I've been preaching this for the last two years, is the tourism dollars are what is gonna save this community. And we need something in this community that's gonna bring tourism here. We're not gonna get another boiler shop, we're not gonna get another boat man, we're not gonna get any of those in here. We can only have one prison in here that that brought in the jobs. So I agree a hundred percent with you. What are we doing? Forward thinking is something we talked about. Um, uh, forward thinking, visionary, future. What what are my kids gonna have in this community for them down the road? And I've been preaching this for years, that there needs to be something. We got rid of our bowling alleys, we got rid of all of our stuff. What do kids do on a Friday night here? You know, and I agree a hundred percent with you on that. And I wanna jump on the other side of things. When you talk about the roads, it got voted down because the residents of the community did not want to. Have the roads fixed and have a a sunset of a extra half cent taxing. Uh, so I would say if we put it back up, vote it. Because we have the money to be able to fix all the roads in Kewaunee and take care of them, because we only get so much that's allotted for our roads every year. And so if we, as a community, that's our number one problem, let's vote it, let's spend that little extra money, and it's not just us that's spending, bringing the tourism dollars in, somebody from Cambridge, somebody from Galva, somebody from Anawan. They spend money here too, that goes to fix our roads too. And that's what we have to stand up for as well.
I will go on to say, we didn't get rid of bowling alleys, we didn't get rid of anything. These businesses.
I know, I'm not saying they're not rid of them.
They didn't generate revenues to keep their doors open. What we need to do as a community is promote these places so that they are being used. So if they generate revenue, they can keep their doors open.
I don't mean the city got rid of them, I meant the community didn't.
What kind of grants or funds are there for someone to be able to um be able to have something like that? Um, to be able to do a skating rink, bowling alley, or something that will stay open um for our youth at all ages?
I'll go on the record here.
And not just grow, have your children grow up and embrace your family here, but then they leave and never wanna come back?
I I wanna go on the record here and say that I've been pushing this, and I've been trying to figure this out, and Gary, you can attest to this for probably the past seven years that I've been doing this. I'm I'm very, and I'm thirteen year right now, travel baseball. I go to Bettendorf to go play at the vet place there. That place is booming. We have, how many travel teams in this community?
You say they go in Bettendorf.
And we're going to Bettendorf instead of, and when Nick puts on the Nolan Keen here every year, what does this town do? It booms for a weekend. And if we had that from April to October, and if we get a group of investors, community development, whatever we have to do, there's plenty of farmland, you know, um, what is that, west or east of? you know, um, what is that, west of, east of, I, whatever, right next to Menards, adjacent to Menards, that we could build, build a mink, but, that place. When that farmland came up for sale, the thirty-nine acres, I didn't wanna sell it for a solar farmer. I wanted that to be developed into baseball fields, turf fields, that are gonna drive people to come here. Then what happens? You get more QSRs, more restaurants that less going wants to develop there. You got more hotels, you got, I mean, it just goes on, because this place is booming from April all the way until October. So if we want that to happen, we need to speak to more people and get that to happen, because this community is thriving. Ball hawks, A's, soccer, everything else. I agree, but-
Well, I appreciate your time. I probably did go over for a minute, so I'm sorry, Gary Moore, but I think it's very important that we think about that. I know we have, we'd like to do all in, to be, um, a spokesperson for our citizens, um, to, you know, do what's right. And I just ask that you, um, do not vote for it. Um, if you're gonna have it here in Kiwanis, just choose a better location. So that three percent that you're gonna get off of that is gonna be used for our community. I need-
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Chad Anderson, Kiwanis. Uh, I am Vice President, VP, or HBN Capital. Um, as far as, uh, Mr. Baker, um, this closest one, you know, you said the square foot or the feet from a dispensary? Kiwanis would be the closest, or the least square footage city in the state that would have a dispensary. All the cities that have dispensary are five, six, seven, eight, ten times larger than Kiwanis. They have no issue our location. They can go anywhere. We are very limited in this town where you can put business that will have people that can come from out of town that can find it. You know, someone said over the old, um, by the hospital. If someone's coming from Princeton, or someone's coming to town, they're not gonna find it. You know, we need something there, we can bring something into town. And also, if they're gonna stop at Walmart, or stop at Menards, they're gonna come to do more than Kiwanis just a second dispensary. Um, as far as the two hundred and fifty feet, yes, um, Benedict's Holding, which owns the building, the Grass Lot, which is right beside Bill's Autobody, and the lot just got sold. So the property line now is on the backside of Old Ron's Haircut. On the backside, that's where the property line will be.
For the purposes of this meeting, I mean, I know what it, what are your limitations on signage and advertising?
There won't be, I mean, we have to follow the guidelines of what you guys set for, on that. Uh, there will be a sign up there that says the name of it. Uh, we tried to pick a name, which I didn't know, Amy said something she Googled, we did not know that. Uh, we tried to pick a name that was not, um, didn't wanna have a, a bad name that was trying to just say straight cannabis. We wanna have a name that was something that was in an area that was more discreet and more, uh, not just a flashy name that, here's a note cannabis. So that's where we came up with the name Top Deck.
It was beyond LO where I work around. I had no idea what the heck that was until six months in. That was the name of the cannabis one right around my work.
So, so when, does the state issue them the license? They don't look at that, the name?
I don't, so-
I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry.
No, the state is not, uh, we, we can choose, we can choose a name. Um, as far as other dispensaries, there is no more license available in the state at all over dispensaries at this time. There is none. Our license that we received is good for four counties, states, it's how they, uh, give the license out. So our license could went anywhere to Stark County, Henner County, Mercer County, or Rock Island County. Well, as y'all know, there's two dispensaries in Rock Island. There's one in Galesburg, there's one in Peoria, and there's one in Peru. So there is nothing from Kiwanis this way. And that's the reason why we chose Kiwanis to be most centrally located for everybody in the area. And like I say, there is no more license at this time for dispensaries available. We, we received the last license for that, for that area. Not saying that the state won't give a license out later, but as of this time, there's no more dispensary license available.
Well, Amy? No, I was just gonna say, I didn't have any questions, uh, because I actually watched the planning commission meeting. And I, I thought it, uh, I had a litany of questions prior to that. Watched the meeting, so I can save you some time. But, um, it was a wealth of knowledge there, so I appreciate you coming to that as well as this.
Yeah, yeah. And also, I have a, I have a seventh grader, I have a sophomore, and I also have a senior. They're aware of all what's going on. And I have concerns with my own kids, even if they were younger. No, because I talk to my kids, I explain what's going on. And after, as much as I've learned since we started this business in twenty twenty-one, there's nothing safer in town as far as a building or what's going on in there. There's nothing in town that's gonna be as safe except for the prison. I mean, the security, we can't control, it's the same thing with alcohol and vaping. We can't control what happens outside the building. It's every day, vaping, alcohol, anything else. Will we try to make sure we maintain it? Yes, we will have more cameras outside, more cameras inside. If something like that does happen, and something happens, we'll be able to see it on our cameras. Cause we have to keep backup cameras for, uh, forty-five days, if I think I'm right, on that, uh, footage for everything that goes on inside and outside of that store.
So one of the concerns that was brought up was people loitering outside.
Correct.
So presumably, you would be able to handle that.
Yes, we'd be able to handle that, because also we will have, um, security inside in two different locations. Best way to describe the facility is like a doctor's office. You go into the waiting room, you talk to receptionist, which will be scanning your ID. Go through metal detector, there's armed guard in there. They will let you in the next room, like they said earlier. The security's there. It's, it's, if there's a problem outside, we have security. We also have to have a security plan in place that's state regulated, that if there is a problem, how do we shut the place down? How do we? What is the thing? There's multiple guidelines we have to, uh, fulfill for state guidelines. Everyone that is involved in the facility has to take an eight-hour course just to know to deal with how to pump. And they're, they're required to do that every year. So I mean, the guidelines is beyond any other business that we are required to follow for employees and also customers.
Yeah, I was very naive until I researched that a little bit. It is extremely strict.
And I've learned a lot more as it's been going on. I mean, it's, 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 there's a lot.
Any questions for Chad before he sits down?
I don't.
Anybody that had talked to us earlier, have any questions for Chad?
This is Doug Wimmer again. All right, the, uh, here's a question. His application was for the property that, where it's at right now, the old broken chimney. They've since sold off part of the property as his admission. Therefore, I believe on the application, you have to put down the location and the property. Well, since the property has changed, his application needs to be resubmitted. In other words, he has to start over again. It's not the same property. Everything has to do with the legal description.
Are you saying he has to reapply with us, or reapply with the state? What are you suggesting?
With us. The dispensary itself, his license is with the state. The property with the application to the city of Kiwanis is based on location. Since he sold off part, or they, somebody, I don't think he owns it, but since they sold off part of the property or separated it, but legal property itself has changed, therefore, they will need to reapply. It's not a stopgap. This is just a delaying tactic, so some, some other people can come up with a better idea. But that is the way it works. That's, that's the American way that, yeah, this is a democratic state, so that's what it is. Anyway, I wasn't done, but I guess I am now, Gary Moore.
Sally Setney. Uh, we've lived in Kiwanis for thirty-plus years. Um, children have gone through Weatherfield, now we have grandchildren going through Weatherfield. Um, I, I wanna make a couple of comments, and then I do wanna ask Chad a question. I think it's rather suspicious that the footage was changed from a thousand feet to two hundred and fifty feet. Yeah, that kind of seems a little-
I, I can answer that one for you. I can, I can answer that one for you. Originally, it was set at a thousand feet. We changed it to two hundred and fifty feet, because when we started doing the measurements from everything that a thousand feet, there virtually was no business districts left where you could put a dispensary at a thousand feet, because there are so many churches and other things. It was very, very limited. I'm not saying they were all gone, but it was very limited. So we, we, we changed it with the interest of providing more opportunities.
Okay, maybe that should've been the first red flag.
That could be your opinion.
That is my opinion, I'm sorry. But you all seem like you're ready to go. Let's, let's go, let's vote this in.
I wanna hear from everybody.
People sitting here, and I don't think, if you ask for a show of hands, I'm not sure you'd get the majority that are for it.
In this room, I, I mean-
In this room, that's true. And, well, I think it's true.
And, and you may be right.
This is all my opinion. Yes?
No, I was gonna say, and you may be right, but we stand here voted by the whole community too. So not just the people in this room.
Okay, so I don't think there was enough of this put out to the public for the, the townspeople to know what it is, like it's gonna be used for. I have nothing against it if it's gonna be used for a medical purpose. But like several people have said, it's out there, it's no, I don't think it's good, I'm sorry. Um, we've got investors in this town that wanna do something with their money, and I think that's wonderful. But I go along with Paula. Let's do something for the youth. The, the foundation of our town is our youth, and we need to deal with that. Um, Mr. Mayor, you said at the last meeting that, um, there was a fence that that, um, you said you didn't want, you would not want that in your neighborhood.
That is correct. I did say that.
Okay, I'm gonna say I would rather not have the dispensary in my neighborhood. And that doesn't mean it can't be someplace else in Kiwanis, I, you know?
We all have our likes and dislikes, so I, I can't argue with you one bit on that.
And to Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a huge building.
Yes, it is.
And is I-
Nine thousand square feet.
I'm sorry?
Nine thousand square feet.
Okay, so I'm under the understanding that it's like two rooms that you're gonna be needing out of that whole big building?
We'll be using just a little over half of that building.
And then who's gonna, who's gonna put a business in the rest of it?
Uh, as of right now, I think MSI was talking about putting all these buildings in there, but they're, at this time, they have no plans for it. We do not own the building. We are renting the building.
Okay, okay.
So I don't know the plans for that.
I, I think to the council, I don't think it's gonna be easy to get somebody else to go in there. I've talked to a few people around town that have businesses, said, would you put your business in the other end of that? And it was, I mean, honestly, no. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sally.
Anybody else?
Hi there. Uh, my name is Tammy Hagman, six oh seven Mendlin Drive. Um, and I just wanna say that I am not for this dispensary. Um, not, not even because of location. I just disagree with having one. Um, I think it's detrimental to the community, to, um, to our youth. And I think our youth are our future, and we ought to be doing more things for them than besides having shops that sell marijuana. And respectfully, I would just like to say, I know you have to be twenty-one. How many of you that have twenty-one-year-olds are gonna encourage your child to go in there? Because I have children over twenty-one. I'm not gonna encourage my children. I just would like to know, if you think you would do that.
Yeah, I, I won't encourage my children either, but-
But why not?
At twenty-one, they're gonna make up their own mind.
Yeah, but if you wouldn't encourage your own children to do it, why are we doing this?
I, not-
Just because, like Dan said, just because you can, doesn't mean you should.
At twenty-one years old, they're gonna make up their own mind.
Yes, and I hear a lot of revenue talk.
Yes, it would generate revenue.
Pardon?
So yes, it would generate revenue.
Yes, it would. But you know what? I think, I think the future of this town and the children in this community is more important than money. Thank you.
I appreciate your opinion. Thanks, Tammy.
Okay, I'll make this short and sweet. It's been a long night.
Better ways to go, yeah.
But, uh, I've heard from people that you guys are comparing us to other communities. This isn't Galesburg, this isn't Galva, Peoria, East Moline, this is Kiwanis. Keep that in mind. Do not compare what the topic at hand is to alcohol, vapes, because this has nothing to do with them. This has to do with the topic at hand. You all know my issue, but this is just the location. And don't compare us to anybody else. That's not fair. Because if you make your mind up from comparing to other things, I don't look at all guys the same. I don't look at all women the same. That's not fair to the good ones. Don't do that to this. And Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
You said you had just sold that property.
It's not sold, it's in the process.
Okay.
I don't own-
Is that something that is gonna make a difference in the distance away from this?
Yeah, that's why they sold it.
Okay.
No, it's not why they sold it. It was sold because Bill's Autobody, Pat Anderson had been trying to buy that property for years from Dale Matthews, and Dale Matthews would not sell that property off. Bill's Autobody didn't want to expand and put another shed up there. Uh, Bill, uh, Pat's been using that property and maintaining it. Dale Matthews never did move it, Pat Anderson always mowed it, which is Bill's Autobody. And Pat came to, uh, Benedict's Holdings and offered him money to buy that property, since it was a new owner.
Cause I've been in town since nineteen sixty-four. I know more about this town than a lot of people think about. It's just real handy that it's now gonna be sold. Whether it's the bill, Kiwanis High School, Weatherfield High School, it doesn't matter who. It just makes it handy, cause now it creates room for you. And you gotta think of that too, gentlemen, and, and ladies. But you have to think about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kinda like to hear what the new chief has to say about it.
No problem.
Uh, well, it's been a long meeting, so I'll keep, keep the topic, but I, my best friend sits right there. I've seen where it's at for him. He's on the ice leg, hard to watch. Look at him now, completely got a print. Not saying it's all because of that, it's a combination of things. He gets better sleep, actually eats food now, which is amazing. Beginning, that didn't happen. To answer your question, to actually, well, got there, um, the issue with illegal black market cannabis is it's not regulated, and they can't put things in that somewhere else.
Candy's in.
That is a problem. Uh, as far as Miss Baker, when she said the, I don't know if I caught it right, but the someone going in there and buying a hundred and forty dollars worth of cannabis and splitting it up, um, any person that's gonna do that's gonna buy a large amount, and I'm sure you can attest to it too, they're gonna be purchase large amounts and then split it up that way, then not gonna buy small amounts usually. Um, as far as location, towards Bridgeway, we deal with a lot of people with drug and alcohol problems. We have a drug team that's been successful so far. Uh, the biggest thing is that's available anywhere. They have to cope with it, no matter where they're at. Uh, Bridgeway was there when it was a bar. Now they talk about the Grill and Shell, I think it was called, back then. That was a bar, there was alcohol involved. Was an issue then. The biggest thing for children in this town is their homes. I have a daughter, goes to Weatherfield. She's great. Uh, that's mostly because of her mother, but he instilled her with the ability to make good decisions. She's gonna make bad decisions. That is gonna happen. So we try to talk about learning from mistakes, having a good foundation for children. I'd love to have a lot more in this town too, maybe this money can help. In two thousand and eight, me and him started the drug union here. We made three guys. We have one now. He's basically a part-time girl cop. So where revenue is concerned, that would help us, the police department, to help uh, focus in a little harder on the narcotics trade in town. So there's, there's negatives and positives and everything. You guys gotta make your mind up.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
You do.
Talk about, that true statement, if they did sell property, that could lead to.
I don't know, that's, that's certainly something to do, uh, that would require a research that I can't do in my.
There are people all the time that put in special use applications that have, uh, uh, an agreement to purchase a piece of property, they don't even own it yet, and there's a contingency, and I feel like this was, they don't own the property, and this is kind of a contingency. I think you can do things to fix any issues. It's that they can't operate without a special use permit, and.
We're approving this, Mr. Chief.
You're approving it, but they can't operate yet until they meet all the conditions, one of which is the distance.
Also, just like anything else the city council does, it can be amended on the fly. Uh, we can, you can make alterations, you can make changes, you do it all the time.
The most special use permits are more concerned with the structure that they're in. Bradley, or, he said that, you know, people can get special use permit for, for a property, and they can sell off in excess of a piece of land, there's no stipulations in there saying, okay, now you sold that piece of land off, so you gotta come back and reapply for it, there's nothing in the zoning code for that.
Yeah, I, I know we've issued many permits in the past that hinged on, uh, the stipulation that they were buying property and if we did not receive their special use, that sale would not go through, so. There are stipulations that, that have come up many times in the past that we've dealt with.
Any, anybody would like to add at this point? Before we move to a vote, is there anybody that has anything they'd like to say? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Faber.
No.
Councilmember Baker.
No.
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
You know, I have grandkids that attend Weatherfield School as well. I trust their parents wholeheartedly to teach them right from wrong. Aye. Moving on to item D, consideration of bill number two four dash three nine ordinance directing the sale of excess real estate located at three oh nine North Main Street. The city of Times will sell properties and homes for the benefit of businesses looking to expand or develop new businesses. At this time, a local businessman has expressed a desire to purchase a small park in the area at three oh nine North Main Street, right behind Coco's. It is not uncommon for the city to place stipulations on, on the sale, but that is not always the case. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. And discussion?
Pretty well talked about.
Yes, John.
Hey, John Sernich, uh, order Coco's tomorrow, I actually have one question about, uh, Weston Packet. One, is this the first property ever that has put a minimum on it, and how did we come up with that? Cause I've never seen a minimum put on a piece of property sold from the city before.
I could, I could speak to that. Uh, John, the, the reason for that is that, uh, the alternative to doing this would be a open bid, where anybody can buy it. For, and then we could, uh, you might not be overversive. We have the power to, to place a, a price on a piece of property when, and sell it directly to a private citizen. Only if, if the council makes a finding that it is in the best interest of the city, if you wanted to do so, for, uh, for things like economic development and such, otherwise we have to set it out to open bid.
So you're saying, this, I will win this no matter what?
Uh, well, if it goes to open bid, anybody can bid on it.
Well, I'm saying, wait three now, I'm gonna get this property no matter what.
Oh, this is a private sale.
It's, it was a private sale, but why is it being put out in the paper for three months?
Oh, well, I'm sorry, John, the, um, we, I, I got confused, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, the, the, the opinion is the same, uh, we, you can, you can set a minimum bid. And, uh, if we, if everybody bids on it, they know when, you can bid whatever you want. But it's more of an advisory that the council will not accept anything underneath a certain amount, because we've determined what is, uh, the relative value of the property based on.
Is this not the first property that's ever had a minimum bid on it?
We sell properties all the time.
I understand that, but none of them have had a minimum bid on it. I haven't seen.
Yes, they have.
Been several that had minimum bids on them.
Yeah.
So how did we get to three thousand?
The what?
How did we determine it was three thousand?
Um, we did a, um, ratio of the parcel compared to the adjacent parcel. Uh, and we also looked at some other parking lots that have been, or other properties that have been sold in the downtown area, uh, around here, and then we actually rounded down.
Wait, well, that's my question, thank you. If you have something we'd like to add after that? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Item B, consideration of bill number two four dash four zero ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a TIP redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Kiwanee and Canet Properties LLC. TIP is a tool used for both new and existing businesses. TIP funds are generated through taxes businesses pay. These funds can be applied for and then distributed by the city council. We're lucky to have a city manager that has a very strong understanding of the TIP. And one big benefit designed for this development is to help lighted areas. This tip is for one eighteen West Second Street, where the hair salon is, to help fund some interior renovations, as well as some plumbing and roof repairs. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And discussion? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Item F. Consideration of bill number two four dash four oh one ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a TIP redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Kiwanee and the mayor's edge. Uh, there's been a request to table this, so I would entertain a motion to table item F.
I'll do a motion to table it. Second.
Please call a roll.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
And item G, consideration of bill number two four dash four two resolution declaring the city's intent to use tax increment financing to finance economic development improvements, or a portion thereof in the industrial park. The city is in discussion with multiple businesses that have an interest of building within the city's industrial park located on Kentville Road. This resolution expresses the city's intent to use tax increment financing to fund infrastructure improvements that would serve those businesses and allow them to incur cost while retaining the potential that such costs would be reimbursed. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And discussion? I think that currently we have several businesses that are interested in, in building out there, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have, do we have any idea what we're spending, what we're doing with all this TIP, like the intent to use? So what, what is all the details around it, I mean, we're, we're proving the intent to use the funds, but what are we using them for?
Uh, public interest, for why?
For interest. Yeah, but like, what, how much, like, how much funds are we using, like all the?
We're waiting on, I mean, this is the first preliminary step that the TIP attorney said we should do, as kind of a placeholder. You know, take engineering costs.
Right.
Engineers to figure out the costs and everything.
So is this the first step in allowing us to, then you come to us and say, this is how much we wanna spend, or are we just giving us?
Yes, we'll have to come back later on with something that.
Yeah, it's not binding as far as with this particular business.
That's what I wanna make sure.
That answer your question?
It does, thanks. Any other questions or concerns? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Moving on to item A, consideration of bill number two four dash four three, ordinance to amend section one one three dash zero five, sale of delatarius drugs prohibited of the city code and ordinances. You know, many times we find our current ordinances are outdated and do not reflect the ever-changing conditions we live under. This ordinance change reflects the potential harmful and dangerous illegal drugs that are being distributed as additives to cigarettes, cigars, and other delivery systems of illegal drugs and narcotics. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
And discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to hear a little bit more about it. I don't know if I'm gonna get this side hearing quite right or something, but.
Second time you've called me up here, I'm telling you. Sorry, it's all, we're getting it for. Uh, so this is just updating the code like Mayor Moore said. This is specific to nicotine and tobacco products sold into the city, so your vape shops and gas stations, things like that, they're updating the delivery systems, uh, the old code basically said cigarette paper, cigar paper. Uh, we added, uh, babes, electronic cigarettes, stuff like that, to start dealing with some of those issues we're seeing in town on a local level, if we can't get any assistance from the state level.
So this is basically modernizing to incorporate things that didn't exist when it was written?
What do you wanna say?
Well, I'm a hundred percent sure of that. We'll call you again when we need you.
Any other questions or concerns? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
And I have my consideration of bill number two four dash four four, resolution to affirm the mayor's recommendation for appointments to various commissions and boards. I often assign people to various boards acting in cooperation with the city council. These assignments become necessary due to expiration of terms or resignation. This assignment is for the airport board. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And any discussion? I'd say that this is a reappointment for Matt Douglas, you know, to the airport board, he's served on that board very admirably for, for a number of years, so he wishes to continue with that deployment. Who's, uh?
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker. Mayor Moore.
Aye. And item J, proclamation for KH, uh, KHS Band and Choir. The next three items are proclamations, most often proclamations recognize special events, achievements, or groups of people. This proclamation is in recognition of Kiwanee's High School Band and Choir. They recently competed and won state championship. I had the courage of reading this proclamation at the rewards banquet earlier this evening. And I will read that again now. Whereas it is a great pride and admiration that we recognize the outstanding achievement of the Kiwanee High School Band and Choir, their directors and leadership. And whereas Kiwanee High School diligently serves the students and the city of Kiwanee, and the band and the choir programs provide curriculum that challenges students, builds character, and develops personal musicianship, and whereas the Kiwanee High School Band and Choir competed with others across the state of Illinois for top honors in the Illinois High School Association Music Sweepstakes Contest, and whereas the Kiwanee High School Band and Choir showcased unparalleled talent, dedication, and discipline during a combined eight hundred and eighty-six point five points during the solo ensemble and organizational competitions to receive the first place position, a testament to their hard work and exceptional musicianship. Now therefore I, Gary Moore, mayor for the city of Kiwanee, do hereby recognize and honor the outstanding achievement of the Kiwanee High School Band and Choir for earning the two thousand twenty-four IHSA Music Sweepstakes State Championship for Class A. I encourage our residents to join me in honoring the band, choir, and their directors, directors for their remarkable accomplishments and in celebrating their invaluable contributions to our community. And witness whereof, I hereby set to my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kiwanee of Illinois to be affixed, um, to this, on this thirteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-four.
I might be a little biased, but they are a fantastic band.
And, yeah, Band and Choir, well, I, I, I got choir people. And I remember they have approximately eight members set between the choir and the band, so, uh, so they, they have made Kiwanee very proud, proud of each and every one of them. And next we have proclamation for Arbor Day. Make sure I get the right one here. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed was the planting of more than a billion trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the corrosion and of the precious topsoil by wind and water. Cutting, heating, and cooling costs, moderating, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing live, life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our fuel, our, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees are a city, increase property values, enhance, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community, and whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Gary Moore, mayor of the city of Kiwanee in Illinois, do hereby proclaim September fourteenth is Arbor Day in the city of Kiwanee. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodland areas. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this day, thirteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-four. And our final item is the proclamation for National Public Works Week. Public works is an extremely important part of any community, anywhere. Uh, they're just as important as your fire and your police departments. They, you know, they, they help the city to maintain the roads, they, you know, they do a number of jobs behind the scenes that we never see. So I, I think it's only fair that we, you know, recognize them, where they are often the unsung heroes of many communities. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, important, and sustain, sustainable to resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Kiwanee, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals, who are managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Kiwanee to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest in the understanding and importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year of two thousand twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, Vietnam. To resolve, I, Gary Moore, mayor of Kiwanee, do hereby designate this week, May, the week of May nineteenth to twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Public Works Week. Urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. And witness whereof, I have.
And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city herein in Kiwanee, Illinois, this thirteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four. And that concludes our new business, and we will move on to council communications. Councilmember Baker, it's your turn to go first.
I'll commence, thank you.
Um, I don't want to keep anybody later than Mary, yeah, but, um, I just want to mention with Arbor Day coming up, the Arbor Day Foundation, you can join that for a handful of dollars, things like ten dollars or something like that, and you get, uh, ten trees as well, so. Something about, everybody always talks about how we need more trees, but they'll ship them to you and whenever it's your season for planting. Big fan of Arbor Day, by the way.
Okay. Councilman Colmer.
I'll kind of keep it short and sweet with everyone. The only thing I want to do is congratulate the band KHS for their accomplishments. It's pretty, uh, amazing that they won.
Councilmember Faber.
I just want to bring up one point about, uh, people are complaining about potholes. I have personally seen them out constantly working on potholes, but you gotta remember, with almost two hundred miles of road, it's gonna take a long time to get around the six. And when something major comes up, they, you know, they want your water, or do you want the whole fix? One or the other. I mean, I, myself, I'd rather have the water back on. But, so don't, don't, people pull over and yell and stuff at them. They're doing their best. I see them all the time, but I'm home all the time, so. I run with you guys, you people are working all the time. And to add to that, um, two of the roads that we get, was I get a lot of complaints, are Route seventy-eight, most often north of the railroad tracks, as well as eighty-one coming into town from Cambridge. Just to let everybody know that I am in communication with I dot District Two, as well as our state representative Travis Weaver and our state senator Neil Anderson. We have a meeting scheduled with I dot on the twenty-fourth of this month, so hopefully we can come up with some resolutions and can give you some answers when those roads may be taken care of. And now it's time for my communications. In tonight's package for the city council meeting, there's a flyer from American Job Center. They're, they are offering training for pre-apprenticeship in construction and building trade. Summer classes will begin July first of this year and run through August ninth. Classes will be held at the Genesio High School CTE building. You must be eighteen years old, possess a high school diploma or GED, and be an Illinois resident. And not only will you receive an education, but students will be paid a stipend of fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. If you are interested in, uh, construction work, you know, check out the flyer in tonight's council package. It's on pages four and five. So if anybody knows of someone that would be interested, uh, definitely check that out, and, uh, it's definitely a good way to get an education there. And on behalf of the city, I would like to offer condolences to the family of Brock Tumbelson. Brock recently passed away, losing his battle with cancer. Brock was an outstanding musician, and you would find him volunteering for almost anything where a helping hand was needed. Now, was Brock a friend of mine that I will miss every day, but he was a friend of anyone that knew him and will be missed by all. I'd also like to extend condolences to our city attorney and his entire family. Justin's wife, Dee, also passed away just a short time ago. She not only leaves her husband, but also a son, and her passing will be felt by many. And then, I had a request from a citizen living near the intersection of Dodge and West Mill. She has young children that ride their bikes in that area, and she said because there are no sidewalks and she doesn't have a large driveway, her kids, you know, usually ride their bikes on the edge of the road. And she said, even though there's not a lot of traffic, what traffic, they do have, you know, tends to drive a little fast, and she was interested if we could possibly put some kind of traffic control, whether it be a yield sign and stop sign at that intersection. Hopefully just to slow cars down so we could check into that possibility, and I'm sure she would appreciate it. And what are current procedures for posting planned work? What, what are current procedures for post, posting planned road work? I, I have, it was suggested to me that, uh, we post on our website and perhaps on our Facebook page which streets are scheduled for maintenance or, you know, resurfacing with the idea that, uh, you know, when crews are scheduled to work on these streets or fill potholes, maybe if somebody would notice that, they would, uh, be a little less apt to complain on Facebook if they saw that, oh, that's getting, they're getting ready to take care of that. Is there any way to, you know, post when that stuff is coming up?
We can for, um, for planned improvements. A lot of the pothole repair is just, um, it, it's so dependent on weather and availability, and if they're working on a project and they get done a little sooner than they thought they would, and they have two hours so they can go out and fill potholes. And I, I would not want to not do that because we haven't advertised or anything like that. It's just, that, the pothole case is really hard to head down to a location.
And last, I just want to thank former mayor Steve Looney and Diane Packey for helping me this past Sunday morning hang out the flower baskets throughout the downtown area. Now, these things will still get done, but it is so much easier with volunteers like both Steve and Diane, so thank you very much.
That is all I have. Do you have announcements?
Yes, city hall and the transfer station will be closed on Monday, May twenty-seventh, in observance of Memorial Day. There are no changes to trash or recycling, however, there will not be landscape pickup that week. Also, the citywide cleanup is coming up on Saturday, June first, from seven AM to noon at the old hospital site. Residents should bring a photo ID and utility bill, and if there are any questions as to what can and cannot go, you can visit our website, our Facebook page, or here at city hall, we have flyers.
And with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Councilmember Colmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Faber.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnet.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.